Okay, okay. Right, so good evening everybody. Just like to welcome everyone to the North Whiteley Development Forum. The time is two minutes past six. This meeting has been held under regulations which came into force on the 4th of April 2020. In response to the Covid situation. My name is councillor Vivian Atral and chairman of the forum. There are just a few housekeeping reminders to run us through as there's new working practices in response to the regulations. First of all, please can I ask everyone present in the virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted? And your camera is turned off. Whilst you're not addressing the meeting, as this will reduce the background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. Please can I advise that the meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Members and officers where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function of the meeting to indicate that you wish to speak or raise a point of order or explanation and I invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Some members may not have access to the chat function. And so I'd ask you to use the raise a hand function. Each time, each member will be invited to speak in turn. Therefore, I would encourage all members to keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible, please. When speaking referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page or paragraph number. Thank you very much. Please note, the duration of this meeting is planned for two hours. Finally, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could you please make themselves known to me through the chat function? I will announce in the meeting that you are leaving the meeting. Please can I ask the democratic officers to undertake a roll call of members to confirm who is present this evening? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Just before I do the roll call Chair, we've got a first hand raised councillor Evans. I don't know if you want to quickly say that first?
Well, thank you, thank you, Matthew, thank you Chairman. I just wanted to query before you started the agenda, I wanted to query something. So if you could give me that opportunity before you get on to the what it is to do with item two.
Okay.
Introduce item two, could I please have the opportunity to say something?
Yes, of course, okay.
Thank you Chair. Chair, we've got representatives from seven councils here. So if I do the roll call in council grouping, it might make it a little bit simpler. Councillor Atral.
Present.
Councillor Bentote.
Present.
Councillor Evans.
Has even been me because there's.
Councillor Gemmell.
Here Matthew.
Councillor Lumby.
Present, is anyone councillor Lumby?
And councillor Miller.
Present.
I'll now move on to the Hampshire County councillors councillor Woodward.
Yeah.
And councillor Hutston. Councillor Hutston.
Present.
Thank you. Moving on to Fairborough councillor councillor Butts. Councillor Butts. Okay, I haven't heard anything from councillor Butts Chair.
Okay.
Eastleigh Borough councillor councillor Pretty.
I'm here.
Whiteley Town councillor councillor Evans.
I'm here.
Botley Parish councillor councillor Mercer.
I'm here.
And Curdridge Parish Parish Council councillor Bodger.
I'm here.
Thank you Chair, that's all members of the forum present with the exception of councillor Butts.
Okay, thank you very much Matthew. Councillor Hutston, as you've just joined us, would you mind just turning your camera off and mic off please? Unless you want to speak later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we move into the business of the meeting, I just wanted to give an update on a number of changes that have taken place at the city centre, city council, sorry, since we last met. Steve Tilbury, who was the strategic director at the city council and who had supported the forum since its inception, left the council in September. Hopefully Steve is tuning in this evening as I'd like to formally thank him for all the efforts on behalf of the forum. I think it was fantastic support since we started this. Steve's role on the forum has been taken over by Julie Pinnock, the city council's service lead for the built environment. Julie is present this evening, I know she's keen to support the work of the forum going forward. We also have the support of Hillary Oliver, who is the North Whiteley information officer at the city council. Hillary will be taking us through her report later this evening. And the day to day contact and liaison officer at the city council. I'd also like to acknowledge everyone's frustration that we haven't met as a forum since February this year. Only the July meeting was cancelled as the local authority resources were focused on the pandemic. However, I know officers prepared and published an updated report at that time. I hope that we now can get back to our regular schedule of meetings. So just now, I believe councillor Evans would like to just speak to the meeting. You're now on item two, appointment of vice chairman, councillor Evans.
Thanks, thank you very much Chairman. I just wanted to confirm regarding the vice chairman and I mean no disrespect to the previous incumbent of this of this post, but could I just have confirmed from officers that this is a Winchester City Council organised forum? That we know that North Whiteley is in Winchester City Council? And should the forum choose to appoint someone who was not a councillor of the Winchester City Council, then they would be unable to step into the chair's role? Should you not be able to be present? Could I just have confirmation that that would be correct? And we've had to appoint a Winchester councillor to chair the meeting?
Matthew, are you able to respond please?
Certainly Chair. I think we looked up this query for the previous year's appointment. And I think the advice that came back from legal officers was that any member of the forum could technically undertake the role of the vice chair. But only, as councillor Evans said, only a Winchester city councillor could chair the forum.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that was my query, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Apologies Chair, just before we move on, could I just do a quick introduction of officers that we've got on the call?
Yes, sorry, my mistake.
No, 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 fine, no, thank you. So members, just a quick rundown of officers present on the call. So we have Julie Pinnock from Winchester City Council, who's a service lead for the built environment. And Hillary Oliver, the implementation officer from Hampshire County Council, I believe we've got Tom Fisher and Duncan Stewart. From WYG, we have Jeff Davis. And from NHS primary care networks, we have Amanda Gray. Plus myself and Dave Shaw from democratic services at Winchester City Council. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much Matthew. So just going back now to agenda item number two, appointment of vice chairman for the forum. As this is the first meeting of 2021 year, it's necessary to appoint a vice chairman for the forum. So do we have any nominations please?
Chairman, I would like to propose councillor Bentote, who along with yourself is a ward member for the North Whiteley.
Thank you, I would like to second that nomination. Are there any other nominations from the floor please?
Chair, can we nominate the visiting vice chair? And I believe is councillor Mike Evans from Winchester Town Forum, if he's prepared to stand.
Do you have a second there? Or is he prepared to stand first of all?
Let's do that hurdle first.
Yeah, I'm quite happy to stand.
I'm quite happy to second that for you. Councillor Gemmell.
Right, thank you.
Thank you Councillor.
So Matthew, do we need to have a vote now please?
Thank you Chair, yes, yes please, I think I think we do need a vote. Members if I'll call out whether, sorry, let me just start again. So we've got two nominations for vice chair councillor Bentote councillor Evans. I'll do a roll call of members on the forum. If members could just confirm councillor Bentote councillor Evans or abstain. Thank you Chair, councillor Atral.
Councillor Bentote please.
Councillor Bentote.
Yeah councillor Bentote.
Councillor Evans.
Yes, could you make it clear that the other nominee is not me, councillor Mike Evans? But I'm voting for councillor Bentote.
Councillor Gemmell.
Councillor Evans please.
Councillor Lumby.
Councillor Evans please.
Councillor Miller.
Councillor Evans please.
Councillor Woodward.
Didn't hit the right button there, I'll vote for the ward councillor, who was that again?
So is councillor Bentote or councillor Mike Evans?
Yeah, I'll vote for the Whiteley Ward councillor, that's councillor Bentote.
Councillor Hutston.
Councillor Evans.
Councillor Pretty.
Councillor Bentote.
Councillor Evans, Mike Evans.
Councillor Evans.
Councillor Mercer.
Councillor Evans.
And councillor Bodger.
Abstain.
Thank you members, one more second Chair.
Thank you.
Chair, I make that councillor Bentote five votes councillor Evans six votes.
Okay, thank you very much. So confirm that councillor Evans is the vice chairman of this committee for forthcoming year. So the next meeting of the forum is scheduled for 18th of February 2021. Just confirm, is that convenient for most people? Yeah, I can't see anyone objecting.
Yes, that's fine.
All right, thank you very much. So public participation, we haven't had any requests for members of the public to speak this evening. Is that correct Matthew?
That's correct Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So agenda item five, minutes of the previous meeting held on the 19th of February 2020.
Chairman, I was hoping to ask the question, I've got my hand up.
Oh, sorry, sorry councillor Woodward.
Yeah, I was just curious to know on public participation, how would the public have known they could participate? Because on the agenda, all it says is if you are a member of the public and would like to listen to the audio stream, you may do so. I don't see any invitation there for anybody to actually address the committee, the forum.
Matthew, are you able to help?
Thank you Chair, yes certainly. About a month or so ago, maybe maybe six weeks, we tried to do some awareness raising sessions with the parish and town councils in terms of publicising the event. And also when the the agenda went out, six, seven days ago, we did the same thing. On item four on the agenda, which is just over on the top of the second page, there is a email address and telephone number for members of the public to contact us if they do wish to speak, along with a sort of deadline by which to by which to register by. And again, we asked the parish and town councils to try and publicise that email address and phone number as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you Matthew. So just going back to item five, back to the minutes, it's pages seven to 10. I don't know if people have the minutes in front of them. I don't know if anyone's got any objections or any changes they wish to note?
Agreed.
Everyone seems to be happy in the minutes, thank you very much.
Agreed.
Thank you. So item number six, North Whiteley Development Forum progress report and update. So members with your agreement, like to vary the agenda slightly to at this point. I'm pleased to say that we have joined this, we've been joined this evening by Amanda Gray, who is the primary care network manager. I believe that Amanda is going to provide us with an update on the provision of services to the to what North Whiteley forum. And is happy to take members' questions afterwards. Thank you very much Amanda for joining us today.
No problems, thank you very much. Yes, I am the manager of the primary care network, which includes Whiteley Surgery and therefore will provide care for Whiteley North patients. So I've just been asked to give you a bit of an update as to how that will take place. So over the course of the last year, the primary care networks have been growing in strength and our network now delivers lots of services to patients, including the Whiteley patients. In line with the NHS tenure plan, so in addition to GP care and nursing care, which is traditionally what we offer. We have a team of pharmacists, we have a team of social prescribers, we have specialist nurses, which between them deliver a host of services. We are scaling those services to include the growth of Whiteley North. The access arrangements for patients have changed quite a lot during the Covid pandemic, but have actually accelerated us towards being able to provide better care faster, so the GP services are now provided in two or three layers. One is urgent care, which is responded to clinically the same day. The second is routine requests for care, which are largely come to us electronically. So 75% of those requests come into us now electronically. And they are dealt with within 48 hours. And then there is the planned ongoing treatment and care of the general population. And as I say, wrapped around that is now a wellbeing and social prescribing service. And a pharmacy service and also an MSK musculoskeletal service. So that is all up and running and we are increasing the size of that on an ongoing basis. That will allow for provision for the increased number of households that Whiteley North will bring to us. The because particularly because of Covid, we've moved much more to a remote consultation model module. So a lot of the care that is delivered for patients is actually delivered by clinical teams, either over the phone or by video consultation, which in the shorter term has therefore reduced pressure on the buildings and pressure on car parking. And over the longer term, will allow us hopefully to grow the building and the car park alongside that increased need. So there is space within the building to release some more rooms over to NHS provision of services. And there needs to be the equivalent plan with the car park to go with that. So that's broadly where we are as a network working alongside Whiteley North, happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Members of the forum, has anyone got any questions that I'd like to ask? I think councillor Woodward, I think, is that? So have your hand raised councillor Woodward?
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much indeed. It probably comes in the report which the officer is going to make later, but given the demander is here. I just wonder if she'd like to enlarge and put it all on her comments about car parking and extra rooms use, presumably the extra rooms is simpler, I'm guessing. Those are the rooms from the upstairs in surgery. But I just wonder what the plans are for car parking? Is it to locate the staff off site or sort out a decent entrance and exit, as I've been suggesting for many years? And I do realise Amanda is not Whiteley Surgery, but she's the one sitting there this evening.
Thank you.
Yep, so my understanding of the situation is there are some, we do have some rooms that can be put over to NHS care, I do apologise, my battery is running low. My understanding is that the practice have previously requested planning permission for some car parking, which I think it didn't go through. But there would need to be in the long term, if you were going to house the entire Whiteley North population and be able to deliver nursing care particularly to them. We would need some additional space to go with those, car parking space to go with those rooms. So I'm not familiar with all of the details of that, which probably you're more familiar than me. Other than in principle, that would be the long term plan.
Okay, I'm not sure how that plan would be enacted Chairman through you as the demander says the planning application was turned down, lots of objections, including natural England, not wanting to see ancient woodland demolished on the altar of car parking. But there is scope to improve what is there already, which would certainly be helpful if surgery would at long last take the time to look at.
Right, okay, thank you. Anybody else from the forum has any questions at all?
Councillor Evans Chair to Winchester City Council.
Okay, councillor Evans.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there were other hands up as well. But my question was sort of related to councillor Woodward's, was about the car parking, you've answered that. Would there be any consideration of the developers offering you a site in North Whiteley for a satellite building?
And so I think it depends on what the aspirational use is. So some, some, the provision of healthcare is very much moving away from a building with a set of GPs in there delivering the services. So and then now that is the aspiration in certain situations. That is not something that we would be able to staff in that way. If there was going to be development that was around people's wellbeing and the general health of the population and there was some appropriate medical services that could be a part of that. That is absolutely something we would be interested in discussing.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Chair councillor Bodger did have his hand up, but it's gone down now, I don't know whether that's a technical thing or a.
No, it's because the point I was making has already been made.
So Amanda, I know there's no members of the public here this evening, but it has been a huge concern of members of the public that they would definitely like to have some satellite provision in North Whiteley. So I just wondered, is there any way we can kind of perhaps move forward on that?
So I think, I think the next step would be to understand what what do people mean by provision? So as I say, in the times, you know, even since the timescales have started in discussion about the development, the primary care networks have formed, the priorities around how we deliver care have changed. So we wouldn't be ruling it out, but it would be about understanding what what was appropriate for the population and what their needs actually were. So that would be something that we would be happy to explore and try and understand better. If you could point us in the appropriate direction. But, but that that would not necessarily be a traditional, you know, general practice in a
No.
But, 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 but you know, let's understand what the need is.
Okay, that's very positive, thank you very much. It's more positive than what we've heard for a long time. So perhaps when, maybe I can suggest when a few more people have moved into that area, we can maybe do a survey or something, see what provision they would be interested in, if that's possible. Councillor Mercer, I think you have your hand up?
Yes, please ma'am. I fail to understand if there's no building, a where the GPs will have their position? And where do people actually go? Now, actually buildings do take up, particularly medical style buildings do take up a little while to get in place. And you're shortly having thousands of people. The existing facilities, one presumes, are sized for the previous capacity. So how does it work? You just, I apologise for this, I'm just a mere engineer of many years standings who's dealt in great depth with random process analysis and things of quite sophisticated nature. I would appreciate an actual practical answer of how it's working. And not anything airy theory about, oh, we'll see what happens, we'll do it. To get some, some feet on the ground please.
Amanda?
Yep.
So I suppose my immediate response was, would be to just reiterate, you know, the changes that have taken place just in the last nine months. So if you took, turned the clock back nine months, most people who contacted the GP would physically come to the building in Whiteley to see the GP. And now 80 to 90% of them are being dealt with over telephone, over a video consultation or in a digital exchange of some sort. And that is quite common practice now across primary care as a result of the Covid pandemic. It is not without its issues and there are parts of the population that that is an uncomfortable change for. But that is a change that has happened, has needed to happen. And it is something that would have happened further down the line anyway. So that in itself has created capacity within the building. So that, that increases the capacity of what a single primary care building can offer. So that's one answer to that which hopefully is able to understand. The other answer is in terms of the building itself, as we were alluding to earlier, there is some space in the building. So it was actually sized for the future and some of it has not been allocated for NHS work as we stand at the moment, because there wasn't sufficient population of people to warrant it being for NHS work. So what we're saying is that for that space, those rooms could come into use. And that is where it was planned for the future many years ago.
Okay.
Could I come back please?
Yes, of course.
Nine months ago, we didn't really have Covid as such, so you're taking a very short term view. You're saying what we've been doing, and I do write websites, I do know a lot about computing. You cannot take someone's blood pressure, you can't take blood samples. Sometimes with rashes, you have to look at them. Sometimes with anything that's to do with ears or eyes or, and a lot of other things. Because I recently had, totally unbeknown to me, because of a medical examination, I don't mind admitting that I found, I was actually volunteering for one of the Covid type schemes, one of the things, that I had a heart murmur. And that was found out while I was being checked for that. As it so happened, I did a lot of work with the doctor online, quite good because we could talk about things. But he had to come and take actual measurements and listen to my heart. And I also had to go to the hospital to have my heart listened to. They've now prescribed me medicine. They've now prescribed me medicine which has sorted the problem out. Now, if I hadn't had that contact, it wouldn't have happened. So you seem to be saying everything will happen online. Okay, so the internet goes down one day, what are you going to do?
So just to respond, what I was trying to say is a large proportion is now happening online, a bit like the interaction that you spoke about, so your initial contact with the healthcare professional was online through a different medium. So all of those contacts used to be face-to-face, so when you do the calculations...
Excuse me, interrupting, my first one was actually being diagnosed by a doctor measuring it. It was not online, because for online, I have got to know I've got a problem. So that doesn't fit. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, and obviously, obviously your specific case, I apologise, perhaps I didn't understand what you said. But seventy-five percent, so we track our data all of the time and seventy-five percent of our contacts come to us online and eighty to ninety percent of those are being closed out without physically seeing the patient because it is appropriate not to see the patient. Now, there are cases absolutely where we have to examine, you know, we have to examine, we have to do tests, we have to take bloods. But what I'm saying is, rather than a hundred percent of all the activity that used to be face-to-face, now a lesser proportion is and that therefore frees up capacity and it allows us to operate differently. So we've got, I think tonight is probably not the forum to go into much more detail. We have, we have some data and I'm, we're really happy to, we know it's a big change for people and it's hard for people to get to understand it and it is a move away from traditional work and there's a lot of work going on nationally and we would be happy to share some of that and try and help the understanding. So we're not just saying it because we think it's a quick fix, we do believe we can deliver the services in these ways.
Okay, thank you very much, anybody else any more questions at all?
Do you mind if I register my disagreement with this? An increasing number of problems these days come about from mental things, you can't talk to people and find out their mental position. A lot, yes, it will happen and Covid has made it very high and it is definitely a move in good direction. I just think that you are giving it far, far too much weight. You should be thinking that it will probably save you forty percent, not seventy percent. And I have studied statistics worldwide on this, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Mercer. Okay, thank you Amanda, really appreciate you coming today, perhaps in six months, so someone else got a question?
Councillor Huxton.
Sorry, councillor Huxton.
Yes, thank you madam chair, perhaps I can help Amanda, what has been raised is very important and really everyone in Hampshire ought to know what the situation is in terms of being diagnosed or otherwise in relation to primary care. Perhaps I can invite an appropriate team from CCG to attend the next Health and Social Care Select Committee in Hampshire to give us a presentation on how it all works, it'll then be proper public knowledge.
Thank you councillor Huxton. Amanda?
Yes, I mean forgive me, I'm not, I'm not sure in terms of your, the forum that you talk about, the appropriate people, but, but absolutely, I mean, our clinical director for our PCN is also the lead clinical director for all of the clinical directors across the local area. So that's Dr Tom Bertram, so I think if you've got a suggestion of how we can help that education, then, then he would be a point of contact that we could certainly, you know, discuss that through and he works closely in with the CCG.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, so anyone else at all? So just want to thank you very much Amanda for, one more, it's a delayed reaction, isn't it, sorry, who else would like to speak? Matthew, is there anybody else?
I think that's councillor Mike Evans, Chair.
Okay, councillor Evans? Perhaps not, okay, right, thank you very much Amanda, appreciate you coming this evening.
Okay, thanks for inviting me.
Maybe in six months we could have another update, would that be convenient?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay.
Sorry Vivian, my microphone wasn't working. Amanda, sorry, my apologies, Amanda, I'm, I've been listening intensely to what people have said. I'm chairman of the PPG actually. What you've said about residents, residents are already complaining in Whiteley that they can't see the doctors. I think we've got to be realistic here. If, if Fairhamborough Council, I understand what councillor Woodward has said, if Fairhamborough Council are not going to give planning permission, we have a building, we cannot afford to delay, we need to have something in place before the residents are moving into North Whiteley. And in due course, once the development is finished, we're going to have fourteen thousand residents. I don't think we can delay, I think we need to get a solution to this as soon as possible. And just to say that, oh, we'll leave for the future, I find that quite unacceptable.
Amanda?
I'm sorry, I'm not hundred percent clear, so I, in terms of, I'm not saying we're leaving it for the future, I'm saying what we've got is scalable, so we, I, I think we need to have a conversation, perhaps if you think, if there's specific patient feedback about not getting access currently, then that's absolutely something we need to look into. I have got that specific feedback.
No, no, but I, but I think that if, if, if Fairhamborough Council, as councillor Woodward said, are not prepared to give planning permission for this, we're left high and dry. The car park at the moment is, is dangerous and it's too small. So there's got to be a solution, what I suggest is that we get a meeting together, invite councillor Woodward to that meeting and have a sensible discussion about it, because if that's not the case, there's no point, if that's not going to go ahead, there's no point pursuing it. We've got a building, but we haven't got a car park. So what I would suggest, Chair, is that, and a, and a meeting is arranged with councillor Woodward and, and the CCG and with the, and with the, the practice and sort this out. And it was agreed a few years ago that that was the ideal situation. I think it's, it's far more complicated than, than is made out and I think it needs to be addressed now, not later.
I believe councillor Woodward's got his hand up again.
He has indeed chairman, thank you for calling me back so I can perhaps correct some of the misinformation. The Fairhamborough Council, as planning authority, refused this application some months ago. I don't believe the applicants have exercised a right of appeal, so it lies there. The answer from the planning authority was no, I'm happy to attend meetings with anyone whenever I'm invited, I never have been invited to such a meeting despite suggestions by some to the contrary, more than happy to talk, more than happy to put forward again the proposals I've made over the last decade for at least improving the car parking at the surgery and gaining some spaces, if not on the scale which was being envisaged, but without doubt and other members, and I have said this many times before, there is a need for accommodation for health in the North Whiteley development, but that force unfortunately has bolted and I don't believe that it's going to be recaptured. So we are where we are, clearly solutions need to be found because as the vice-chairman has said, there are significant levels of complaint and I get them on a daily basis relating to Whiteley surgery and in terms of access to GPs, and I know the GPs I'm sure are doing their best, but there does appear over the scale and time of the pandemic, who have been, I think GPs nationally appear to have sort of retreated away from the tradition of physically seeing patients for I'm sure quite understandable reasons and dentists have done the same and it really hasn't come back. And I do remember a couple of years ago suggesting that we would move to a situation where most consultations were online and I still remember the lead partner at Wickham Surgery, because we were talking about Wellborn at the time, telling me I was an idiot for thinking that GPs would ever consult online, well, look at it now.
Okay, so I'm just trying to think maybe go from here, so perhaps Amanda, if you're willing, we could set up another meeting? Maybe between, I'll get the city council to organise something?
Yes, we would be very happy to attend a meeting and yes, discuss those arrangements.
Okay, so everybody happy with that?
Yeah, thanks Vivian, that's, Chair, that's fine.
Okay, all right, Amanda, thank you very much for attending.
Thank you, I'll leave the meeting now, thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you again soon, thank you very much. Goodnight. So members, we are still, I'm just going to see where we are now, just bear with me. Right, so point A, we have an update from Geoff Davies from WYG and Dave Evans, if he happens to have joined us from Bovis. Geoff, would you like to give an update please?
Certainly, thank you Chair, I prepared a little presentation, but I don't appear to be able to share screens. I don't know if that's something can be turned on or...
Matthew, are you able to assist please?
Can you give me five minutes Chair and I'll...
Yes, of course. Okay.
Shall I carry on?
Yes, of course you can, yeah.
Broadly, I'll give a quickly update on, on, on planning. We've currently got one thousand four hundred and forty-three houses that have been submitted for, for planning and a significant amount of those are now achieved, planning permission. And in terms of our works on site, Bluebell Way is now getting very close to being completed. We're aiming to have that complete next month and are planning to open it in the new year. On my presentation, I've got lots of lovely photographs which I can't really share with you, but I shall come back to those in a moment, but for instance Cornerstone Primary School is making very good progress, that's sort of cracking on down there. We're working now on the Northern Axis Junction, it's a major piece of work took place last weekend and that is also now very close to being completed, so by the end of the month, that should be fairly tidied up and fully complete. And of course we're working...
One minute Geoffrey.
Sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt, Miss Davies, that, that should be working for you now, so...
Excellent, excellent, I should just bear with me, I'll just find it. So hopefully you can all see that now.
Are you able to make it any bigger at all?
It's full size on my screen.
Okay, okay, right, I've done it, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. I touched on planning, so just sort of, you know, looking down at some photographs, picture speaks a thousand words. There's a view of the Western Axis Junction looking down where the Crest Development's on the right and Taylor Wimpy's first development on the left called Burridge Green. Some residents have moved into the Crest Development. Just as, it's just as this goes, pans down, this is following Bluebell Way as it, as it goes down to the south. We call Bluebell, well, Bluebell Way Central is one of the, one of the Bovis Vistry developments just there. We do, by the way, have the drone footage which we issue on a monthly basis, but I felt it might be too much for my internet connection.
Yeah.
Trying to show that today, that's the second Bovis development sort of further south, again, sort of racing along. And there's a picture of looking south over Bridge Three which is now complete, looking towards Whiteley in the distance there. I mentioned the Cornerstone Primary School, that's a picture of it taken at the end of last month, so that's also sort of racing along. Mentioned the Northern Axis Junction, again, we've now got a number of residents living up there on the Vistry site as well. That's an aerial view of Bridge One, which is just to the south of the picture above. Fairly large sixty-one metre span bridge there, which is making pretty good progress. And this is switching down towards the south of the site, this is Whiteley Way South and a view of the Taylor Wimpy Woodlands Chase development, which is coming on a pace down there. Hoping to open show homes to that early in the new year. The view of that, sort of the same area, that's Whiteley Gardens there in the middle, coming forward. Brief update on, on how we're doing with the housing parcels, so, so far, by the end of last month, we'd started four hundred and eighty-four houses, completed a hundred and fifty-nine of those and have now occupied some forty-eight altogether. Just touching on off-site Whiteley Way, you'll have noticed that we have now started the works, we're doing, undertaking some advanced works down there between round about two and round about three, and there's a picture down here below of that which started going. And that is aimed to sort of, the road that's widened there has to be built up on, on an embankment, so we're getting that built first, so it gets, has a bit of time to sort of settle down. But also allows us to bring in, we have a fairly major service to bring in from the primary substation down just off the Parkway, so allows us to be able to bring that in. We're also undertaking the service diversion works up between round about one and round about two, just in a moment. Just click down, I tacked on to this a very brief update of a presentation that was given a couple of years ago and see if that fits on your screen. Slightly coming on, slightly coming off mine, I don't know if I can make it, can you see that okay?
Yes, that's fine, yeah.
So this, it was just an overview of the of the strategy. We're building three primary routes through the development with improvements to Whiteley Way, making contributions towards the Hampshire Works up at round about one, junction nine, introducing a couple of signal control junctions onto existing Whiteley Way and eventually signalising Station Hill and Potley Road Junction with other improvements as well. So just a quick update on all that, so highways package one, which is basically Bluebell Way, so that's really well complete and we're hoping to open that next in early January, which is well in advance of the original section one of six requirement, which is to have it completed and fully open by a thousand and seventy-five occupations. Just briefly touching on the, the works that, I know Duncan Stewart's on the call, but highways package two, that's also well underway now with works projected to complete in summer of two thousand and twenty-two. I mentioned highways package three, which is off-site Whiteley Way, we've started work on, on that, again, well ahead of the section one of six requirement. And we're currently working between R two and R three and we're, we're at procurement of the, the main works to undertake the full widening. Subject to how, how quickly we can get clear of the various service diversions that are going on, we're hoping to start that sort of February, March next year subject to getting all our agreements in place and traffic management plans agreed and so on. That's the intention. Touching on highways package four, which is the off-site cycleway and going up to the improvements up at the junction. That cycleway is now underway and is hoped to be completed in spring next year. And again, touching on what we call highways, the overall highways package five. We've actually now procured and started the works to link the Northern Access Junction right down to roundabout three. We've already done the works at Northern Access Junction coming into the Vistry site. Also down at the south, it's coming up to the Taylor Wimpy site, but we've now let the contracts to link the two together. With the aim of there being a link substantially in place by the end of next year. So again, that's very much ahead of of the original section one of six requirement. It's obviously linked to the LPL funding, which has enabled that to happen as well. So thank you Chair, that's the conclusion of my little presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. I noticed there's a few hands up. I'll go to Eric first. councillor Bodger.
Right, I just picked up on the suggestion of signalising the junction at King's Corner between Station Road and Botley Road. That is due to be replaced by a roundabout for the Botley bypass. Is it not unwise to spend money on something that's going to be superseded rather than building a roundabout with the, with a blank exit for the Botley bypass?
Jeff?
Oh, I agree. I think in ours, the section one of six allows for, to be switched either way, I think. I must admit, I must, I'm not 100% sure on the position on what's happening at that junction. But it isn't, we're not building that anytime soon. We're just constructing the cycleway up there at the moment.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, thank you very much indeed Chairman. I'd just like to concentrate, if I may, on Bluebell Way. Now that, I do declare the interest, if you like, sit on the board of the Solent Local Enterprise Partnership, which of course made a very significant contribution of several million pounds to enable the developers to bring forward early the connection of Bluebell Way. And we're being told that, in fact, I think when I asked the question a year ago, it was about it was going to be opened not too long. And I did clarify that was going to be open for people and their cars and stuff. It was. We're now being told it's ready or as good as, but it's not going to open until next year. I just wonder if perhaps the presenter could be a little clearer on precisely why it cannot be opened before the end of 2020.
Well, first of all, we've got some finishing work to do. We're still just about starting work out on the Bluebell Way extension to the south. So we have a little bit of work left to do. We could be ready just before Christmas, but unfortunately it's not the best time for us to open up the road and then have sort of certain problems over Christmas when we're largely stood down. So my clients are keen to open this road as soon as possible, but we felt that sort of early in the new year would be more appropriate than opening it before the end of this year.
I'm not very clear if I may come back Chairman. I don't really understand if a road is completed, signed off as such, as I hope it would be by highway authorities, you know, it's up together, it's safe, it's lined. I can't see how it can be a problem to open it. I don't know how it can then cause problems over Christmas. If the road is fit for purpose, then it should be opened as soon as possible.
Jeff?
Well, it's simply, I agree with you. Once it's ready to open, it should be opened, but it's, it's, it's not quite ready to open. That's, that's the first thing. So we are in the process of getting everything sort of finished and signed off. But from the point of view of our sort of site security and so on, we don't, we tend to have a two week shutdown over Christmas. So it's simply that the view of the developers that it should wait until the new year. But it's very much in their interest as well to open this as soon as possible because we now have residents there. And, you know, so it's for both reasons.
Let's give Whitley and Burridge residents an early Christmas present then, please Chairman, and get it open before Christmas.
That would be nice if that's possible, Jeff.
It would be, but my instructions are to open it in the, in the new year. I mean, very early in the new year, by the way, but it's, it's, it's not going to drag on any further.
Is it possible to ask?
I will certainly take your views away.
Okay. Because I know the residents that have moved in are very keen, you know, it's open as soon as possible. And councillor Mercer. Thank you councillor Woodward.
Thank you Chairman. March is early in the new year. Could you be more precise about when you mean? I mean, if it was the mid-January, I think we're probably okay. But if you said mid-March, it wouldn't be. So what is your best engineering estimate of when it will actually be open, please?
We are aiming for the 4th of January. That's, that's our current aim. So.
Sorry, excuse me one minute. So I can see someone else. See, is that Mike?
Chair, we've got councillor Pretty, councillor Lumby and councillor Mike Evans.
Okay, councillor Lumby please.
Apologies. Thank you, thank you Chair. I thought councillor Pretty was before me, but I'm, if he's happy for me to go ahead, I'm happy to jump in now. Thank you for the updates on Bluebell Way. I think we've covered that now. I was going to ask about that. Thank you for the presentation as well. Can I ask about the programme on the school development? We had referenced to the primary school and the replacement Cornerstone Primary School. What situation on the secondary school? When's this programmed in? Who's dealing with that? When is it likely to be available and what communications are being given to other schools in the area? So they can ensure that they have the appropriate numbers up or down to take account of the lighting. Thank you.
I think I can only really refer to this section one of six in terms of the delivery of the school. So at the top of my head, we're due to transfer the land by 1,100 occupations, I think, on the section one of six requirement. So that wouldn't be for a couple of years, I should think. I'm not, I haven't heard whether it's been brought forward. Obviously, what I've mentioned earlier is that we're now building the infrastructure that will service that and that road would be in place by the end of next year. But further to that in terms of the programme, I'm not sure I can, it's a question that I can answer directly in terms of when it would be built because that would be a Hampshire contract.
Okay, it is. Thank you. And obviously, I didn't expect you to answer more than you have in your understanding. Is it possible for someone to take that away and come back with an update? I'm not sure whether that's one for Mrs Pinnock to comment on, or whether that's one for the county council, but it'd be interesting to have that update brought back off, offline. Thank you.
Perhaps that's something we can add to the next agenda, because I'm sure we have a bit more details by then, if that's appropriate. Would that be okay?
Be, be, be very useful. And thank you Chair, from my perspective, that would be great to have an update. Perhaps incorporate it into the report as well.
Yeah.
Chair, apologies. Hillary just wanted to come in on that one.
Okay, Hillary.
Hi. Yeah, I was in contact with AGC Education about their plans for the school. So their latest update is they are working to the plan section one of six dates. And the school would then, once the land was transferred, be built and would take up to two years once the land was transferred to build it. We have been in contact with them, letting them know the occupations and where the applications and the numbers are going ahead. And I know they've been working on their areas that the schools need to cover. So they have been kept aware of all the numbers. So that has been going on.
Okay, that's very helpful.
But we can obviously have another update at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks Hillary.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I can't actually see who's waiting. Is that councillor?
Councillor Pretty Chair and councillor.
Councillor Pretty please.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Jeff for such an interesting update on the progress on site and the highway matters. One that is particularly of interest to me is highway package four, the footpath cycleway through to Waterwell, Botley Railway Station from the Northern Junction. I'm pleased to see that contractors have basically completed the junction. They've started the footpath. How realistic is spring 2021 to get that cycleway finished? There's a lot of work and a lot of clearance to be done. And I think with the increase that's up in the traffic, it's imperative that we have a safe footway, cycleway through to towards Botley and the station. Thank you.
I think it's reasonably realistic. And a lot of the clearance was done in advance, you know, trees and so on. That was all done quite a long time ago. This is something that Vistry are working on themselves sort of directly. But that's my understanding. And unfortunately, David Evans hasn't managed to come along to join us this evening. Might have been able to give a more detailed answer than I can on this particular item. This is the update I've received from them. So I think that's very much the aim. I think they like, we have an obligation actually to, you know, to finish this before the 50th occupation in the north of the site. So that's what, you know, that's driving that as well. So so I think it is, I think it is realistic.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thanks Jeff. And councillor Mike Evans.
Thanks Chair.
Okay.
Jeff, we're all keen to get Bluebell Way open. But you know our concerns, which we've expressed at the highways infrastructure committee. I'm still concerned about R1A. I mean, we've made it clear and it was agreed with a consortium a few years ago, and some of this is obviously down to Hampshire County Council. We know we haven't got the businesses there at the moment. We're not expecting them to come back until about March, April. Or whether they do come back fully at 100%, but we know that R1A, that is the turning into Parkway North, is a hazard. The whole idea of opening Bluebell Way early was when we were in normality was that we would divert traffic away from the works and Whitley Way and they would go back through out to the Botley Road, not using U Tree Drive, would be using Bluebell Way. Now, when are you likely, if you're not going to do the temporary works that we asked for on R1A, when are you likely to complete R1A?
Well, the works, obviously some of this is still subject to getting agreements in place on traffic management and so on, but it's very much our aim to try and get the off-site Whitley Way works substantially complete next year. As I say, that some of this depends on what exactly we're allowed to do in terms of when we can work and trying to keep traffic flowing down there and so on. So it may take a little longer. But certainly we'll be looking to complete R1A as soon as possible as part of those works, which I think is what was agreed earlier on, that we would prioritise that junction as well.
Yeah, Jeff, but we agreed at the highways working party with the consortium and Winchester City Council that we would not open Bluebell Way till we've got some temporary signalling at R1A if it's not open. Look, that has been where all the accidents have happened. That's where all, we've had complaints from Whitley residents. And I don't think the Bluebell Way, contrary to what other people have said, should be open until we've looked at that more carefully. And I think we need to have the, we've got a meeting in December and I think we should look at the problem yet again to make sure we're making the right decision. There's not much traffic at the moment, but if they start coming back and with Christmas coming as well and after Christmas, if that gets chaos, it'll be gridlocked. And I think that we must look at that again. And I hope that we can do that at that meeting.
I'm certainly happy to do so. You know, we've, we've, we did develop temporary work schemes there before for discussion with, with the higher authorities, so.
Yep. Well, maybe we can take that up with them at that meeting and have a, have a discussion and see what we believe the implications are. Because I can tell you the town council and the residents will not be, will not be happy if there's going to cause problems. That's where all the accidents happen. And nobody will, if they want to turn right and out of that junction without any signalling there, they will not be able to do it. And therefore they'll have to go up U Tree Drive and through up Whitley Way and through U Tree Drive and out through the bus gate. And that's what we wanted to avoid. So can I just make that point that that is absolutely crucial?
Okay.
No, I agree. I mean, it's very much part of this planning process.
I understand. I understand. I just want people to understand that is one of the things that we've been pushing for years. And it has been agreed. So we need Hampshire County Council to look at that temporary scheme. And hopefully they'll be at the meeting in December. Thanks Jeff.
You're welcome.
Thanks Mike.
Thanks Chair.
Are there any more hands up at all? I just wanted, Mike, just to ask you about this package falling and the cycle route along Botley, Botley Road. I had an email from a resident who's quite concerned about how close that is and how narrow it is at one point. It seems very narrow between the cars and the cycle path. And I don't know if the roads can get a bit wider there or not. Obviously it's not complete yet. He was quite concerned it was very narrow. It's just on the brow of the hill. I can't explain actually. Maybe I need to show you properly. But there were concerns about how safe that area was. So maybe offline I can show you separately and explain a bit better.
Certainly, no, no problem.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions for Jeff at all? Okay Jeff, thank you very much for your update.
You're welcome.
Councillor Woodward just raised his hand.
Just one if I may Chairman. It may even allude to what you were mentioning. There is a point which is by the access of the new Whitley Way on to Botley Road. And you were mentioning, but where it does seem extremely narrow, the road at that point, you know, just sort of picturing two heavy goods vehicles approaching each other there. And it just seems very, very tight.
I think it's opposite of Fairthorn Grange. I can't remember the name of the house that's there now. It's right on the brow of the hill.
This is a new, this is a new section of road. It's where it's been remodelled, not the old road.
Yeah, the new one.
Seems incredibly tight, I think width wise.
I think councillor Bodger wants to add to that possibly. Councillor Bodger?
Yes, just that we've had several complaints from parishioners about that very structure of road because it is so narrow.
Yeah. Okay Jeff, I think I need to show you offline.
Okay.
Exactly what I mean. Okay. All right. Thank you very much Jeff.
You're welcome.
And do we have David Evans here at all from Bodys? Matthew?
No, we don't Chair, no.
Okay. All right. So perhaps look for an update at the next meeting from him. So so Renout 6B, which city, which city councillor officers update. So at this point, I'd like to hand over to Hillary Oliver to take us through her report. Thank you Hillary.
Hello. The report was obviously published to you. It really follows a very similar format to Jeff's. So I don't want to go through every single item again. I know in my report, it talks about a lesser number of occupations than Jeff's. Just because of timing, yeah, we can confirm that we're probably up to over 50 occupations at the moment. We have approved the latest Vistry parcels on Friday. So the report talks about it's still under assessment, but it's now been approved. Which was for another 449 houses up in the north. So we are expecting that to start fairly quickly. And in terms of the allotments. and in terms of the allotments, uh, allotment three has now been approved, which is an update from my report. So we've got allotment one and allotment three have now been approved. And we're still considering the site for allotments two. Um, not really much to say about the applications that are under construction. Uh, they are being built really quickly. And as mentioned in the report, there has been quite a number of the houses, the market houses have been sold to Vivid, which is a registered affordable housing provision provider. So there will actually be on-site a lot more affordable housing than we had anticipated getting, which is good news. Uh, as I said, the primary school is still on target to be complete in July next year, ready for an intake in September. Um, just to say, the open spaces, the green open spaces are being constructed, and the basins are now in, a lot of the basins are being constructed alongside to support the houses. Um, don't really think there's any other update than the Jeff, than Geoff has already mentioned. If there are any questions about the report, I'm happy to take them.
Okay, thanks, Hillary. I can see councillor Evans, Theresa Evans has a hand up, Theresa.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, as you know, I'm the Chair of Winchester Planning Committee, and I can't remember any planning application coming to our planning committee. So what would trigger um anything coming to committee? And why is it all being decided under delegated powers?
Thank you. Hillary, are you able to answer?
Um, it's purely down to the scheme of delegation for planning applications. And there are no objections to these applications, so there is no trigger for them to come to committee.
Could I just come back on that, Chairman?
Yes.
Why would anyone who doesn't already live there object? I mean, I mean, where are these advertised? Are they advertised in the Whitley that has been built? How do we, where is the democratic um representation here? I mean, I know you and your ward councillors, Chair, Chairman can bring it to committee, but members of the public wouldn't be bringing it to committee because they don't live there yet. Just, I just feel slightly concerned that we
Okay.
haven't got any democratic representation. I don't know if Julie wants to answer that.
Thank you, with your permission, councillor. What I'd like, I suppose what I would say is that they are proceeding in accordance with the outline planning permission and the design code. So I I fully accept councillor Evans' points about democracy. We obviously consult with the parish council. I can talk to the case officer, who is principally Simon Avery, about how we make sure about that wider engagement. I think that's a really good point. But equally, what I'd say is they don't trigger a committee referral because they follow the scheme of delegation. And actually, they are following the outline planning permission. So unless there was something, a departure or a deviation, then, you know, really, it's just getting on with that work and getting those applications through the process, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, may I just say one last thing?
Of course you can, yes.
This is the only large settlement in the Winchester district that hasn't at some point been in front of the planning committee. Um, and so I'm just surprised by that. I'll say no, I'm just really.
I mean, all I'd say, Chairman, is that we, you know, when the outline application was determined, we took it to Whitley. We we hosted the committee, didn't we, at the hotel?
Did.
I know we had to come back and do a second meeting to follow up on a few technical points, but that was a matter that was considered by a planning committee. And I think, you know, as I said, we are dealing with what we call reserve matter applications now, and they are following the outline planning permission. So I wouldn't necessarily at this stage expect them to be too much departure from the original outline planning permission.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Councillor Bodger?
I just wanted to say that Kurdish Parish Council considers the reserve matters applications very carefully, and we've had no problems with any of them. Uh, I think what Julie said is true, that the original outline is being followed very closely.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Councillor Lumby?
Thank you, Chair, and continuing along the same theme. Um, a couple of questions. First of all, um, the design code is clearly very important here. Is that still fully up to date? Has that been, is that being reviewed? Is it something that we keep under sort of a constant um review so that it 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 continues to evolve with with best practice? Um, does the nitrate have any impact here at all? Um, because I clearly that's a big issue. But also just picking up on the point that councillor Evans made in terms of democratic accountability. And sort of going back to where we were at the beginning of the meeting, which is that there are no members of the public here. This particular forum is a great opportunity for the public to have its say what's going on. The last one of these, of course, didn't take place. Um, and I I'm concerned that perhaps this wasn't given the the full um publicity to the residents of the area, that it might have been. I may be completely wrong about that, and apologies if so. But I wonder if perhaps there may be some lessons to be learnt, which we could apply in time for the February um forum, so that perhaps we get more members of the public coming along. I remember the last one, much heated debate about the football, um, football pitches being provided. Um, and it would be good if we gave a suitable outlet to any frustrations that may be building up at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. But maybe I can just build on that as well. I don't know if the, with the new residents, whether we've, is there any way we can indicate there's a meeting like this on? So if they have any issues, I can let us know.
Chairman, with your permission, I was, I was thinking exactly the same. We've heard since Hillary's report, we've heard a significant number of increases of occupation, haven't we? Fifty plus
Yes.
today, which is quite an increase on Hillary's original report. And I think that shows that it's just starting to, um, let's say, get occupied and flush out. And I think we can, whether that's Hillary or I, or whether it's something with our community development team, we could certainly do something with those existing occupations and let them know, A, about reserve matters as they come through and this meeting going forward. And I know when we were talking about, and Matthew mentioned it at the beginning of this meeting, we talked about who we tried to reach out to. I thought we also were thinking about whether we could compile sort of an email list of people that did want to be kept regularly updated on this type of event. And we're happy to compile that and maintain it. Obviously, there's GDPR issues, but I'm sure we could manage that and 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 start getting a bit more um public engagement. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much. Eric, councillor Bodger?
So, sorry, Chair, is it possible to have some answers done on the other questions I just raised there? In terms of the design code and the
Oh, sorry.
and nitrates and the other questions, sorry, I, I'm very sensitive. I get whether you nod, it's very, you know.
Thanks for your reminder. Who's going to take that with Julie?
Chairman, I think what I can say on nitrates is this planning permission was granted before that issue. So there is an outline planning permission, but it doesn't apply in this case. Um, that's already been counted for. Uh, with regard to the design codes, I'm not sure how familiar Hillary is with them. But what I'd say is Simon Avery can certainly bring us back a future uh progress report actually on conformity with the design codes. I'm quite comfortable that that he would have been assessing applications on there. And I'm sure there's some flexibility within there. Uh, and I'm sure the developer would tell us if they needed to flex that a bit more to sort of make sure we're adopting the best current practice. And I'm confident we've got our own design guide, we've obviously got the design codes. The government have got their national design codes, uh, building for beautiful as they progress that. So I think, you know, we've got our own urban designers. So I think, you know, I'm quite comfortable, there's that flexibility within there to make sure that there's A, compliance, but B, adapting to things as they change.
Okay. Um,
maybe we
Do you think it's, do you think it's worth asking Simon for an update at the next meeting?
I think that'd be great, if that's possible, Chair.
Yeah.
General, what we can do is we can incorporate that into Hillary's next report too, with comments from Simon. And if we think he needs to come, we'll certainly invite him. But I'm, I'm quite confident you'll find that, as I've reported, and we can just make sure that continues.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Bodger, yeah, had your hand up again.
Yes, I was looking for a status report on the transfer of North Whitley into the Whitley Town Council area.
Julie, are you able to speak, or Hillary?
Chairman, I think at this stage today, we don't have an answer on that question. There's obviously a governance review issue around that, which is sort of being looked at more corporately. And I'm happy that we perhaps take that away and bring that back as a future item for the forum.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, I I had a quick question, if you don't mind. Um, you mentioned there's forty-eight people or households occupied now. I just wondered, are the councils considering doing like a welcome package for these new tenants? Do you do anything like that at all?
Chairman, I wondered that myself, but Hillary could perhaps is a little bit more closer to that than myself.
Okay, Hillary.
Um, no, it isn't something that we have planned at the moment, and we haven't done on the other major development areas. Unfortunately, we we just don't have resources or any budget to do that.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. And councillor Evans, Mike Evans?
Thanks, Chairman. Um, just to let you know, we've, we've started doing something on that. Um, and it's something I'm going to bring up with Julie and to talk to Hillary. I know the town clerk, Nikki Oliver, has been in touch with the vicar as well and many others, putting together a package which we can give to new residents. So that has been discussed, and I'm, and I'm sure we'll, we'll speak to Julie and Hillary about it.
That's great news. We'd be happy to participate in that and 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 give some add to that and contribute, so as we've got that, you know, part of that wider pack. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, if you'd like to keep me informed as well, please, Mike.
Yeah, of course, you, well, you'll hear it at the town council meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much. So anybody any further questions at all for the officers? Okay, thank you very much.
Um, I go again. Sorry, could I? The one thing I did forget to mention to the meeting, update on the traffic regulation order in Bluebell Way.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so I heard today that, yes, that's going in the paper on Wednesday. So that is in progress now.
That's with double yellow lines, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, up on the existing Bluebell Way, not the new bit.
No. Is that, is that a six weeks consultation?
I think it's only three weeks. Um, but then we'd have to assess the responses. But obviously, at the moment, we can't do any work until the cycle way has been completed at the bottom of the existing Bluebell Way, because obviously can't put the yellow lines in yet. So we'll, there will be a slight delay there.
Right. Councillor Evans, Mike Evans?
Yeah, Vivian, just, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say to Hillary that um you you are aware and that the forum should be aware that we have consulted all the residents in Bluebell Way in the existing Whitley about what we're doing there, and there was consent to what we are doing. So, and that's one of the issues, obviously, till Bluebell Way can't, cannot be opened until we got that that cycle way and other bits and pieces there sorted.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I noticed, sorry, I'm just going on, I noticed, I noticed Duncan Stewart was here, Stuart Duncan. I don't know if you've got a quick update at all about any of the highways issues?
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. I'd be more than happy to provide a brief update on M twenty-seven junction nine scheme.
Yes, please.
We, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come back and provide an update to to the forum. Um, so the scheme commenced there on the first of June, and there was a slight delay to the start of main works due to COVID, impact of COVID nineteen. Um, and responsibility for us to get additional cabins on site at our compounds, and for example, to make sure that social distancing measures can be adhered to. And we've been making good progress on site despite those restrictions that are in place, um, limiting the number of people in those early stages of the projects that are on site. We, uh, what has been taken place so far really is a huge amount of earthworks to facilitate the future road widening as part of the scheme. And also, there are a very large number of public utilities diversions that have to be undertaken for electricity, water, some major gas mains and communications. So a large part of the work so far have been within these sorts of, uh, sorts of elements of the scheme. Um, and that has also resulted in a large number of works having to be undertaken at night for road crossings to limit impact on the road network. So we've been trying to make sure that the community and key stakeholders are kept informed of those night works. We certainly haven't been receiving a large number of complaints about nighttime working, but we have got more coming up through November, particularly over the next week. And a large part of that is to replace the surfacing, permanent reinstatements of Carriageway surfacing around Parkway South Roundabout, which we, our contractor has been keeping uh close attention to over recent weeks particularly. Um, but we are aware that there are some concerns from residents that some temporary surfacing has been in place for some time. So that will be to be undertaken over the next week, and we'll be giving further information out. Our current completion date is summer twenty twenty-two, but we're confident that certainly there are elements of the scheme that we will be able to complete while in advance of that date. We're working with our contractor to try and make sure we get as much resource on site as possible as we open up new areas of the site, um, so that we can bring forward those elements, particularly M twenty-seven junction nine, to coordinate with the work that Highways England are undertaking for smart motor. Uh, one, one point that councillors may well be interested in is obviously there are a lot of works going on in very close proximity here, both for the works we're undertaking at junction nine and the works that Highways England are undertaking for smart motorways, um, including vegetation clearance they're carrying out on the main line. So there are quite a number of, uh, not complaints, but inquiries we receive from local residents in the Whitley area regarding noise at night and things. So we are meeting regularly just to try and reassure councillors with the Highways England team. We're trying to make sure that any inquiries we receive that are related to their scheme are forwarded to them um sort of promptly so that they can respond to any residents' concerns about those works, and making sure that we liaise with them about how we communicate those works to residents as well. So, um, yeah, there's, and as I said, we're, we're also doing everything we can to sort of minimise any disruption. So on, for example, these nighttime works we have over the next week, they won't be commencing till ten PM, which is a lot later than we normally would commence our nighttime works, and does limit our working time at night. But again, that's to reduce any impact on businesses that do remain open during the lockdown for takeaway services and so on as well. So we're doing everything we can to minimise disruption, despite the fact that unfortunately some nighttime working is still unavoidable at this stage. Um, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the forum, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you very much, Duncan. Um, we have councillor Woodward, his hand raised.
Thank you very much, Chairman. The the main issue, I'm sure, um, an officer from Hampshire will be aware of it, is really complaints about the standard, the appalling standard of the works around, the surface works around junction nine and down to the first roundabout as well. You know, it really is awful. I know there have been a string of claims made, and I know they've been successful as well, but it really would, uh, you know, I, we just need to be all over them, I think. You know, I've got contractors, Scansker, that it really is bad. And it just seems that each shower of rain that comes, another trench is washed away, which I found to my own shock yesterday coming from Sedgeensworth.
Thank you, councillor.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Chair, thank you, councillor. Um, we are aware of a number of issues that are ongoing with some temporary surfacing. Our, our site representatives have been liaising with the contractor to make sure that those are being inspected regularly, and repairs should be being undertaken and regularly on a daily basis and on, on some of the ones which are particularly have been in place for some time more frequently than that. Um, there have been some changes made to temporary materials that have been being used to reinstatements to try and prevent any, any sort of poor surfacing in place. We're aware that there are still some which are temporary. There've been a very large number of trenches that are required. Uh, there was one incident in particular, which I know, know that you're aware of, councillor, uh, on the third, fourth of October, where there was a very heavy rain, and there were some changes made to our premises post that. Um, we have been liaising with the contractor to be, make sure that any claims regarding incidents to do with surfacing are being dealt with very quickly, and we have gotten them re-inspecting those, those temporary surfaces much more frequently. As I mentioned, there are night works planned from Thursday night this week, which will be specifically undertaking permanent reinstatements of that Carriageway surfacing, which should lead to significant improvements in the situation with regard to Carriageway surfacing, not just at Parkway South Roundabout, but at junction nine as well.
Okay, thanks, Duncan.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Duncan? Okay.
Chair, sorry, it's Matthew again.
Yes, Matthew.
Sorry, Chair, just before you move on, just, just to advise you
Sorry, Chair, just before you move on, just to advise you, we've also got Tom Fisher from Hampshire County Council on the call. And Tom, I think is a new contact for the forum, and just in case, he wanted to say a few words by way of an update. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Hi, Tom, maybe, don't know if you have a quick report you'd like to give us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have taken over the role that David Earl used to have in this.
Okay.
There are a couple of, a couple of things that I've noted down. I've only taken on this project for the last two weeks, so rather than give an update to the forum, if it's okay, that I take that away and provide an answer via email.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. I believe that's, if there's no other business for this evening, that concludes the meeting. Just like to thank all the officers that are here today, and wish you all a very good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vivian. Well done.